To colleagues, we have a quorum at the scheduled time. We now start a special meeting of the finance committee to our two sessions this afternoon. Till six thirty today. And please keep your zoom camera turned on and show your face and the microphone will only be unmuted under my instructions. And during the meeting, you must use the virtual background function with a designated color in zoom. The purpose of the special meeting, to scrutinize the budget estimates for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, to ensure that the funding request will not exceed that required to execute a certain policies. I must remind that your question must be directly related to the budget estimates. If members would like to follow on the government written reply, please quote the reply serial number. Like LWBWWO one. If members unable to follow with the written replies at the meeting, you can make a supplementary inquiries in writing. And submit to the secretary before the end of the meeting of that day. The supplementary questions will be limited to the written replies of the government. I would decide on the speaking time of the members for fair and orderly arrangement of speakers. At time. Please clear your raised hand indicators. And now members like to speak, please press the raise hand function in zoom. And first welcome Secretary for Labor and Welfare and his team into the for the meeting. This is the. Welfare and women's session on labor issues, it was safe for the next session. We invite the secretary to deliver his opening remarks. Thank you, Chairman and nonbut members. In twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, the government recurring spending on social welfare and women's interests is estimated to be one hundred eleven point eight billion dollars, accounting for nineteen point eight of the total recurrent government expenditure of the year, second only to health amongst all area groups compared to revised estimates of ninety-seven points four billion in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, there's an increase of about fourteen point four billion dollars of fourteen point seven percent in recurring spending on social welfare. And the recurring government expenditure on elderly services in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three is estimated to reach about fourteen billion dollars, representing an increase of about eighty-two percent over about seven point seven billions in twenty seventeen, eighteen. In this coming year, the government will provide some additional one thousand five hundred and eighty subsidized residential care places for elderly, including three eighty places provided by contract homes and subsidized homes. Around twelve hundred additional EA one places purchased through the enhanced bot place scheme EPBS as well as one hundred sixty-four subsidized daycare services placed for the elderly. And this come year will recognize various power scheme, including on the power scheme on home care and support for elderly persons with mal impairment. And the past game might have discipline outreaching supporting for elderly study for for mid February twenty twenty-three and passing a residential care service voucher for the elderly. As well as to speech therapy services in enhanced your home and community care services. And on the enhanced but play scheme in this coming year. There's some E H U places will be upgraded to EA one standards. Which we will add more resources on that for new elderly facilities for the coming year. There'll be new ones completed, including a multi welfare service complex in Kuchung North N G A, providing about one thousand seven hundred residential care places and forty daycare service places for the elderly. The contract home in Queens Health Development Project in Fanning will also provide additional one fifty residential places for the elderly. And this facilities are expected to become man service in second half of twenty twenty-three. And for cash welfare. And the second half of two oh two two will merge the higher O eight allows and the old age living allow us. In so the more leading asset limits of the normal O A L will be adopted across the board. And the eligible applicants will receive the higher O A L rate. And furthermore, the financial secretary proposed in the budget to to provide extra allowance to eligible social security recipients equal to half a month of payment. And for those new arrangements for the working family allowance recipients as well. Another regularization. Will be the power scheme of social work service for pre-primary institutions. The past game will lapse in July and then it will regularize will cover seven hundred eighty-eight or subsidies pre-primary institutions. Another area will be the review of the neighborhood support childcare project. Hope that this review could be completed by mid twenty twenty-three. On women's development. In twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, the government earmarked about forty-two point one billion dollars to promote women's interest and support to work at the Women's Commission. Includes the provision for Ezek Singh W O C implementing the capacity building managed programs C B P M and allocating funding for women's group to implement programs conducive to development. And this concludes the opening remarks and we welcome question from members. Let me have the order. Miss Maggie Chan, Mr. Lam Chan Sing, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Lam Chi Yun, Mr. Hong Wen, Mr. Lee Ho Yung Man Kit, Douglas Kun, Chi Yun, Quat Ming Lei, Mr. Ma Feng Quat, Mr. Benson, Look, Miss Judy Chen, Miss Elizabeth Quat, Mr. Chow Soo Chung, Regina Yell, and Samantha and Stanley. First, Miss Maggie Chan for minutes. Thank you, Chairman, follow with LWB. On my question. And LWBWWO one three. I'm extremely let down by the administration answer on the protection of children. I asked how much resource and manpower is spent on protecting children. The administrative reply is six hundred eighty-five words. And it disclosed that for inspection officers for regular in and surprise inspections and scrutinize the registration applications of childcare centers, the rest are talk about procedures. The contact is very rather vacuous as if they are watching from the sidelines. Is the LW resources spent on procedures on on protecting the well-being of children. So secretary. And on how many permanent inspectors responsible for the inspections of childcare centers? And second, S W D conduct how many regular or surprise inspections on the CCCs? What was the average waiting time? And how many suspect child cases were discovered? And after the discovery of the children's residential home, do you have a blacklist of the staff for investigation? Chairman. And for the LWBWWO one three for the first part. Well, the advisory inspectorate consists of four inspectors. Well, the electrical approved the establishment size of S W D various units. I know that we all cared about what happens at the children's residential home owned by the Hong Kong Society of the Protection of Children. And since last December, once we known of the scandal, we deployed a lot of manpower to supervise the investigation. Besides any inspectors, the other colleagues, for example, clinical psychologists and also our kind of services. And early May will call a special meeting with the welfare service panel for a more detailed discussion on supervising the childcare services. Thank you, Chairman. Secretary. Well, for the children's residential home incident or protection treatment in principle, well, electrical meeting won't do. You're not answering my question. I'm asking how much resource and manpower instead of see in general terms. I want to know, do you have any valid for money analysis? I want to know the resource and manpower respect. Or you just tell me that all the childcare centers and for the list inspection, they were all handled by four inspectors. For chat abuse, we have a larger team to deal with child abuse and domestic violence. And this is for this unit, I don't have the exact establishment size at hand. I believe there's there's over a hundred staff and handling and child abuse cases. And for the replies to the special F C is about the regulations governing CCCs as in the answer for inspectors are deployed. If let's go see that we need to add more resources. I believe that we can discuss it in the upcoming review. We need to add more manpower and resources that I would like to have the electrical member support in events. Next, Mr. Lam Chan Sing. And thank you, Chairman. Well, Secretary, my first question on the head one seven oh of S W D, one of the key tests is to merge normal and higher old age living allowance. Do you have a timetable yet? In February, the F C decided to raise the C S S amount. I asked a similar question. The government did not have a position yet. Do you have a timetable by the second half of this year? And second, and on the manpower at the residential home for elderly. And for the March fourth, the secretary wrote in his blog that is a fact that we have a manpower shortage. First, the secretary claimed that the subvented O C H E salary scale has been revamped. Back in October twenty seventeen, the audit department report claims that until the lump sum grant system of some of the aided O C H Es accept the lump sum grant. However, the pay to the carries is below that what is as expected and it was discovered by the audit department. And some of the entities actually paid more than the midpoint, but some of them are underpaid. Well, if it underpaid is hard to attract talent. The audit department's proposal did the LWB follow up and second and on enhancing of the navigation scheme for recruiting young people to join the caring profession. And thirdly, a lot of people are signed up for the E R B three days care courses. Well, for the daily five hundred allowance, I found few tickers to attract new talent. Can you extend this allows? If the government found it five hundred dollars expensive, can you make it three hundred dollars or two fifty dollars daily as an incentive to people to make people join the L C H E industries? And I received complaints with the agency did not want to hire the E R B three-day trainees. If this is true, this is quite irony for the government that the air each trainees are not welcome to the market. Who should we train? Can LWB have other measures to help the graduates crack into the job market? And Chairman, I'd like to talk about the the relevant parts in the budget for the higher O A L A merging with the normal O A L A. Well, by Q three this year, about July and August, we will commence to work. And we will announce later as the time is approaching soon. As so these pathetic organizations under the lump sum grant system. On the use of funding, we've been concerned about this. We're helping them in hiring the staff. We are especially concerned that whether they can pay the starting salary point to hire new staff. And for the subsidy amount for each position. Well, for a care workers is slightly about twenty thousand dollars each. I believe that this is quite attractive.
As for some homes. Might have to isolate some of the residents during the epidemic and then they will receive five hundred dollars in subsidy. This is provided to the homeowners during this difficult time. And when when they have to face tremendous pressure, we hope they would continue to work in those homes. That when the epidemic eases, that there's no plan to continue to pay the same subsidy or allowance. We would certainly look at their manpower situation and make sure that they would get the number of workers they need. I I want to refer to reply oh one seven. Hong Kong is an aging community and there's a great demand for elderly services, especially residential home places. There is a waiting list of two twenty-two thousand in March and their average waiting time is forty-one months. The government has been introducing enhanced measures to support these homes. And some homes are providing extended daycare or weekend services. We should look at the distribution of the those on the waiting list, geographically speaking, so as to better meet their needs and in the future. Are you going to set aside, say, the lowest stories in the in new housing estates for such facilities so that we can better meet the needs of an aging community? And also, it would be best if their family members can live on the upper stories of the same building so that they can take care of their elderly family members. And of course, this would certainly be reassuring. And then I would want to refer to O two O and another question. I want to talk about carers. And also the pilot scheme on providing an allowance to carers of the disabled. Now that more than seven years has passed since your introduction of the pilots scheme, is there any plan to regularize the scheme? Are you going to provide any more support to these people in the future? On providing support to community services. We'll look at the eighteen districts and how things are distributed in these districts. There are different organizations providing different services. We will look at this in deciding the funding. We know that some of the services are in great demand and the supply is short. So we would consider the situation such as a daycare center and places for other services in the funding provision. And because of the aging of our community, two years ago, in the policy address, it was announced that in the future public housing program, five percent of G F A will be reserved. If the supplier P R H is not to be affected, five percent will be reserved for social welfare facilities. So the land involved would be sufficient for one hundred R C H Es. Of course, there will be premises for other services such as the daycare service and other support services. So you you sort of know the level of space provisions that will be provided for elderly services. As for the allowance for carers. But the two schemes in question are still in the trial stage. And after that, we would set. We have a clear idea of how the future direction should take. And in due course, we would present our ideas to the welfare services panel. And members' comments will be most welcome. Mr. Lam Chi Yun. Thank you, Chairman. Well, stay healthy, Mr. Secretary. My question is LWBWWO two three and O two four. I think, Secretary, you agree with us that we need to take care of the elderly, the vulnerable and the young. We have spent money on these services and the rates of increase are good. Totally speaking, is an increase of four point eight percent. But if we look at the goals, then it's they are disappointing. For example, you, the society which for for the protection of children was found to have abused children. And now we know that child abuse is a problem. And and they are doing this society for the protection of children is doing exactly the opposite. But you are going to have a bill presented to this council in the first half of twenty twenty-three. What are you going to do in the meantime? As Miss Maggie Chan has said, have you been doing your inspections? And what kind of monitoring monitoring will be carried out? But I understand that even at the end of the day, you have to give, you have to give the mandate back to the Hong Kong Society for the Catcher of Children despite what it has done. And the society for the protection of children has come out to say that they are they have reviewed their system and they want to get more resources from the government. So they have committed a wrong and they still want more money, more resources from the government. But they are sort of threatening you that don't cut our resources. I hope the secretary will not will not be subject to the such and given to such threats. So you must have something to in your in your toolbox to address this. And I have to and assure members that there's been no child abuse case substantiated in our so welfare facilities. Well, although the police have been making arrests, but that was in respect of things that happened in December twenty twenty-one, they are not current affairs. So I hope you must get the facts right. At present, nothing is has is happening in that regard. The relevant staff in questions have been replaced. And many senior and experienced people in other child protection organizations have been lending a helping hand to get things right. Chairman, I believe in in the future, when we discuss this in a social welfare panel meeting, we will be ready to exchange views with members. We need to spend more time to explore how the law should be amended. So that we can better regulate the guidelines. Better regulate a professional practice and the behavior of the workers. So this will need time for preparation. Mr. Look Jong Hong, my question is LWBWWO four one. Secretary, you know, I have been very very concerned about family service, parental education, parenting education. There are three hundred places, but on child custody dispute, there are about seven hundred new cases for the year. Do you think that the surface level is sufficient? Do we need to increase the number of places? Because divorce is now very common. And there's a great demand for such a service and we need to monitor child custody cases very carefully. And also on matrimony, I know the H A B can offer some help. But alimony. How do you deal with disputes arising from alimony not paid promptly? And your support is mainly focused on crisis handling. So such just like putting out a fire when after it has started. As for family, the development of family education, prevention, education. Do you think that that you can do more? Is there any room to to provide better parenting education? Instead of moving in only after the problems have arisen. We should try to do more in educating the parents so to prevent the problems. I think these questions are related to some policies, but I can provide some brief answers to the question anyway. On the disputes, child custody custody dispute cases. Sometime we have more, sometime there are fewer. But in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, there were more than a thousand cases in from twenty 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 twenty-one is is dropped to seven hundred and seventeen cases, although the number of divorce cases has been rising all the time, but well, as a matter as a percentage of the divorce cases is not increasing at the same time. So we would step up our surface for child custody disputes. And I know some working groups, well, not related to the LWB directly, but the family, the council on family is still gathering information. Well, if they are sick getting trying to get some feedback from you, please do offer your comments. On family education, our integrator family service center also provide a surface in this regard is under the Integrator Family Service Center. And we need to do more publicity to get these people coming forward to seek help under the Department of Health and also through the collaboration with the S W D, we would identify the high risk. with the S W T, we would identify the high risk families, especially those with young children and we will provide early intervention. So there's been a very close collaboration with the Department of Health.
The silly hug in. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on my own question, L W W O O five. I'm glad to see the administration replied that the mandatory reporting mechanism for suspected child abuse cases has started the drafting work and with a target of introducing the ability let's go in the first half of twenty twenty three. The bureau pointed out that S W D is making necessary preparation for practitioners in the relevant professions to enhance the capacity for early identification and handling of child abuse cases. I want to find out more. Do you have a concrete timetable and implementation plan? And in the Bruce reply of the Services Centre on providing training, the S U claim that it has not kept such data. My ask to you, why there's no such data? Can you explain? Do you have any initiatives to prevent a recurrence? Or the lack of training for the seven years against child abuse in the case of child residential's home under H K S P C? Well, for the second part of the question, maybe the S W D colleague can supplement me. For the legislation for mandatory reporting mechanism for suspect child abuse. And in my reply to the earlier member is involved different professions. They would have their own training and professional protocol or code of conduct. While we are taking forward the legislation, we'll at the same time explore their training needs. And may need to adjust their code of conduct to align with the legislative amendment. Our target will be a table the the build and first half of twenty twenty three and complete your review. That's we will simultaneously decide on the training timetable and the resources required. I believe that the training required of different professionals, there should be plenty available. As when necessary, we will come to let's go to lobby for the resources. However, this resource request is not in this year appropriations bill. For the second part, I'll defer to the S W D director for additional information. I do not have the data at hand, so maybe after the meeting, if I can locate it, I can supplement to Mr. Lam. That's all for me. Chairman, and if follow up. Not next, Mr. Young Wing Kit. First, the follow up on my own question, W B W W O seven, five, O seven, eight, five, eight. I'd like to follow on the hostel for severely or moderately mentally handicapped persons on the number of new service places. And for the next year, we add more service places. I noticed that the as just a hostel from thirty three point seven months had risen to seven one seven point eight months. I increased almost double candy. Sector eight, even though the twenty twenty one, twenty two, the severely and moderately handicapped persons hostels has shot a waiting time, the waiting time is still staggering either thirteen years or ten and a half years. I don't see just the improvement in the waiting time. My ask the secretary, how do you see as appropriate waiting period? We consider setting up a reasonable time target to boost the supply of hostel places. For example, building subsidized houses or working through the bought place scheme or expanding existing welfare facilities to add more places. Would you consider early planning, for example, work king through inserting classes in the land cell competence? First, I would like then I'll follow up on the R C H E's. Currently, the R C H E's place are under supply, is offended and the aid places. We call for quite forty time of forty one and forty two months. There's not slightly improve a lot of elderly passed away while waiting for it in twenty twenty one. Sixty three, six thousand two hundred eighty three elderly passed away, still waiting for their place. Compared to twenty twenty two, even though there's a slight drop from about seven thousand. Do you have any measures to shorten the waiting time for R C H E places? Would you consider setting up service indicators for the two hundred billion plan to procure welfare premises? What is the progress? Secretary, okay, Chairman. Well, members who are concerned about a welfare may know that that in the twenty oh eight, the Hong Kong Planist Center and Guidelines for the Rehab Services and elderly services planning ratios were deleted. In these subsequent years, the service supply had suffered a shortfall and last year we tried to lobby more resources and the land to build those wealth and facilities. And and these facilities will be commissioned in phases by the next term of government. This encompasses a lot of elderly and rehab services. The eldest, the elderly services had the planner ratio incorporated back into the H K P S G. And our rehab services and most recently, the service demand is now incorporated back into the H K P S G. For the long term planning of the demand subject to land supply and housing construction, which will help us reach the required output. Therefore, the L D O B cannot take the lead of land planning. Of course, we all understand if you pay attention with especially recently and the latest welfare service panel meeting. Of the the and the usage of the lottery's fund. We've provided a lot of information on the R C H E's and the rehabs facilities, construction that we look at the focus on the fun exercise and the granting and the sale of land to make sure there will be some welfare facilities built. In the future, public housing, there will be a five percent of the grass floor area devoted for welfare purposes. I believe that most of which will be for elderly and rehab services, especially homes. For the twenty billion to procure the premises in terms of how we spend the money. At the end of this year, we will go to the welfare service panel to give an update. It will provide information to maturely affect the ongoing negotiations with the sellers. This is quite substantial sum at the right juncture about the end of the year. We will furnish more information to the welfare service panel. Thank you. Next reference, Peter Kuhn. First, I look to follow up my own question, W W O one eight. We all agreed that the children residential services is quite a key area, especially for those in residential childcare, they're usually from troubled family backgrounds. My in my question, I'd like to thank the government to provide a one operation for service operator for professional support. All for the small group homes, this amount may not be enough to hire a full time staff. Such that they could only procure limited services or top up at their own expense instead. But as for the provision question, I wonder if this could be topped up. It's the bureau responded according to the lump sum grants adventure system. The agent allow the agencies to flexibility deploy resources. I wonder if the very understand for by the lump sum grant is really based on the midpoint. And this has been disputed for many years. In fact, it not just over a word fight over semantics for the so called midpoint. Well, most of our staff are not paid on the mid salary midpoint as most of them are reached their maximum point. And for these professionals, there's no way that we can hire them by the mid scales point salary. This was severely impact our services. And earlier, we see some agencies engaging children services a slide into crisis. I hope that the bureau to consider any ways to to deal with it flexibly. And recently, we had a one percent cut in our resources. We can't deploy our resources flexibly. I hope that the bureau can explain. Thank you, a referring and Quinn's question, and I'll take this opportunity to reiterate it that under the lump sum grant system, the that we use the midpoint salary for the payrolls. You have done the math of the organization used to midpoint as the maximum pay point. That means that the agency will manage to save a lot of money. As some of the higher face unpaid less and by an average that would be below the midpoint. If everyone is below the midpoint, it shows that this agency would not effectively utilize the resources given. And for those who are concerned about this, we should explain to these agencies is some of the staff have agency probably recruiting staff. But for example, a personal care worker or nurses or allied health professionals. And we are not paying the midpoint salary and we will actually I get raised by two pay points for somebody, home care worker. The we are paying the equivalent of the maximum pay point. Well, whether to pay for each grade must be adjusted. We will review it very soon and thank you for Chairman's because you hope that the sector should understand on how to spend their resources wisely. And if all of them that referring could just now the secretary mentioned about the midpoint salary, a lot of agencies. Well, we need to compete in the private market. If the well, in effect, this is not not a lot of agencies are using the midpoint as a maximum agency. Well, sometimes use the resources wisely, some of them are using the maximum pay point to hire experienced staff. It's Mr. Take you. Thank you, Chairman. Since the bureau is in a position that some of the agency are spending too conservatively. Or as a supervisory agency, why do you discuss with the agencies and try to convince them to spend prudently? Instead of accumulated reserves while these workers are underpaid, I wonder if we can take a bigger role in this next. I'm strongly against the government cutting one percent of budget of the NGOs. So you are targeting the disadvantaged. The two hundred million savings mean nothing to the government. However, this detrimental to the NGOs. So secretary, have you evaluated impact to the agencies after one percent cut, especially the small and medium sized agencies have it? Review this or discuss with the sector at all. Second question. Well, the L C H is hit hard by the pandemic. The government has set up an interdepartmental group to look into how to improve the hardware of the L C H E's. When will the report come out and will it be make available for the electrical to comment? Thirdly, L C H is iconically understaffed. The C E stated before that this is a chronic problem. The shortage of over twenty percent. If the government noticed this, how can the government improve or help the L C H E operators in terms of recruitment? Or actually make the pay more reasonable? Well, I believe that Mr. Dick may be familiar that there's a requirement of suspended organization of the best practice guidelines. On the points to observe that the agencies could make good use of the lump sum grant and provide reasonable pay to the staff. If not, there must be a strong justification to the S W D in order to supervise the performance.
Well, how many cases have you actually handled? Why I don't have the figures? But it seems that this time, no one asked this question. Over the years, people have been asking how many of agencies have been saving up to the maximum allow? And every year, well, we would have some thirty odd organizations not really utilizing the funding to them to the maximum. And they have been they asked to return this unused subsidy. And some would we have to crouch back tens of millions of dollars. And some members did ask oral questions on this subject and we we reply to those you may wish to find the relevant information in those replies. On the work to fight epidemic, what the working group has been convening frequent meetings. And they would implement the measures right away instead of waiting for the reports to be compiled. Because we need to act quickly in fighting the epidemic. For example, how ventilation and and air circulation can be improved in the homes on the question of manpower for the L C H E's. Well, this is a very old subject and the time doesn't allow me to go into details here. Mister Miss Qu Ling Li. Can you hear me, Chairman? Okay. It's about my question. Old eight, two, four. On the question of neighborhood support childcare project, how much administrative cost has been incurred? And what is the percentage of the total funding? You you talk about the need to be flexible and therefore the organization will be allowed to decide on how much to spend on administrative costs. So it's as the supervising department, perhaps we must have the statistics, we need to make sure that the money, the funding is well spent. They need to submit annual reports. I don't understand why you don't, you have no information on administrative costs. We need to get this information so so as to ensure that the funding is well spent. And another question is O two, two, eight, asked by Mister L Man Guang. And that is a daycare service for those suffering from severe disability. The S W D's a question answer is that you have no information on the on the number of waiting list applicant. And you know that some people that disabled would have to apply for a place in a home. And while they are waiting, they may get this surface at a daycare center. So in the past years, there were two thousand on the waiting list. Why 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 is it that the S W D has no statistics on the number of people waiting? If you don't have the number of waiting lists or people on the waiting list, how can you plan for the provision of service? Chairman, maybe I should offer a general answer first. In the estimate. And in relation to questions on the estimates, here's the general approach in replying to members' questions. Because we need to provide information within a very short timeframe. We can only try to get the information from the records that we have. Doing some simple summary from the readily available data. Otherwise, we have to stop work and try to take out the information required. That will mean that we cannot reply to members' question within the short timeframe allowed. So the information we provide is the information that we already have in our system. But sorry, secretary, what I'm talking about is important data for service planning and the way we can assess the value of service. Are you trying to say that you don't have backup data on, on so many things? Well, we need to have information on manpower planning. And very often, the data will have to be compiled with the assistance of the service provider, the agencies. And when SWD asks for the data to be furnished, that the the welfare organization will have to expand efforts to try to get the data compiled. So we have already got data which matters of concern to members over the years. So we'll try to sell out the information that members require. But if the data are not readily available or we do not keep the records as required. Then it would be not, it will not be very practical to try to take out those info, the information in order to provide replies to members. Mister Ma Feng Quo. It's a WW007. Is the way listed applicants of R C H E's. But of the waiting time has improved somewhat. But now though with the epidemic, many elderly residents have been affected. And you have now set up a special committee to review the surface provision. And for many years, the government only provide the services. There's no comprehensive elderly policy. And now you look at air ventilation, the healthcare services, et cetera. But what we need will be more comprehensive and a very well thought out elderly service policy. We need to look at the longer term. Can we set up a dedicated department? Can we have appointed commissioner for the elderly? So as to do away with the bureaucracy in the, in different departments. And the WHO has advocated that we should look at the elderly service to encourage them to have an active and healthy twilight years instead of just keep them alive and lead a life with no dignity. How, so how can you look at aging? Not, not from the perspective of, of a friend or a challenge to our community. Rather, that is a phenomenon that would present opportunities. Thank you for your questions. Our members may wish to look at the elderly service planning in 2017, which looked at the planning for elderly services, homes and community services. The assessment of service demand and planning and et cetera. There are details on, on all these matters. And we have been implementing the necessary measures. This, as this time, the estimates are about 2022, 23 on additional provisions, et cetera. So from this year's estimate, you may not know about the longer term planning. So please refer to that document to learn more about the direction that would, will take in the planning for elderly services. Any from you, Mr. Ma? Yes, there was such a policy. That may be the case, but if I look at the estimates for this year. Your replies don't seem to tie with the so called past policy. For the 2022, 23 estimates, you will not see the planning for the coming 10 years in respect of elderly services. You need to go to that document to see the planning process. Will not put the planning details in the 2022 and 23 estimates. Mister Look Hon Man. My question is about L W P W W O four two. And that is acquisition of premises for the welfare services. In 2021. The reserve fund expenditure is 44 million. And you have a reserve 491 million in for 2022, 23. But it's lower than 500 million, but in the policy address. Now you talk of paragraph 171, you talk about you expanding $20 billion for the purchase of premises for different welfare services such as home. Eighty six thousand places will be provided. But before that is realized, this year, social welfare organization, we have to face the great future of having 1% of the lump sum grant cut. And because of the epidemic and the expansion of a lot of activities, fundraising has been difficult. And they have been working very hard because precisely because of the fight against the epidemic. And now you're just spending 500, under 500 million dollars, although the total provision is 20 billion. And now the funding cut for social welfare organizations would just result in a reduction of funding of 200 million dollars. So I've asked this question again, let me ask again. Would you spare these welfare organizations this time by taking back the 1% cut? In, let's go, so all questions and in the social welfare services panel meetings. We have been discussing and we have been answering questions on how we made how we made maximize the government funding for the best results. So I can't, I don't want to repeat what has been said. As for the progress of the scheme, special scheme. Yes, progress has not been very satisfactory, but we would like to see more than to, to purchase the premises we need. But this is a capital expenditure project this year. In terms of recurrent provision, we are increasing the funding and so that we can enhance and provide more service. Of course, the idea is good, the acquisition of additional premises for the social welfare organizations. So that they can offer better services. But on the question of making the best use of resources, I hope the government will reconsider the current proposal. Is it that it? Is it a good idea to cut 200 million dollars in financial provision while at the same time you don't want to spend 20 billion for premises?
We can assure you that the service will increase but not going the other way. Next, Mr. Judy Chan. Well, under the fifth wave, the understaffed thing at the LSH led to heavy casualties and LSH will follow on my own question. L W B W W O one O. And back in 2015, the SWD launched the navigation scheme for young person in care services. And up to now. How effective is this scheme has the assess the actual contribution in terms of have injecting new blood. Until in the 2021 year, it has enhanced the navigation scheme and provide a total of 1,200 training places. Can you tell us how many trainees are in this scheme? And what is the remuneration allowance of the trainee? And how much are they getting paid every month? Upon graduation. Any way that it can seamlessly integrate or transition into employment? Besides the LSHs and LST, there are also a two elderly household or a single elder household is hard to age in a community. In the community. There's not various, a lot of service that I can provide to them besides attracting young people to through the navigation scheme has the government consider providing more family friendly measures to attract women employment, especially talking to women to join the care sector. And speaking of the family friendly practices, I'd like to follow by L W W O one one. Just now the secretary mentioned about the neighborhood support childcare project. All the extra expenditure and budget of past few years has kept increasing, especially 2018 to 19. And 2019 to 2020. The number of children actually dropped by 2,000. Well, the decrease of the number of child, so children have actually spent 20 million more. Can the secretary explain? Under the navigation scheme. And since 2021. We have introduced enhancements. For example, the starting salary. I hope that a colleague can supplement before the enhancement at time of 2015. The starting salary was about 11,000. We have raised it to 14,000. And that with increased success starting salary by a few thousand dollars and for the working hours. Since they need to take time off to study. First, the 44 hours requirement drop to 40 hours so that they have more time to further their studies. And let me explain. When a young people decide to enter a profession at the initial stage, let's say in the first year. Then the wastage is very high for others who work with young people before like the wastage within a year is very high. Well, if they decided to join this game, they would become part of the care service sector. For family friendly practices and our overall labor policy. And for family policy and through the policies in the HAB, we've been taking forward the family friendly workplace policy. Hope that the employers can sympathize with the employees need to take care of their families. And so that those with a family can work a while balancing their household duties. And I welcome the members to take forward this family, family agenda. Next, Elizabeth Quat. Thank you, Chairman. What the secretary claimed that the child abuse cases reached 1,267. And for the HK SBC case, there were plenty of children abused. This has the best actual homes to other children abused. I hope that the secretary can expedite the mandatory reporting mechanism and reduce the offense or failure to protect. And you claim that the timetable to legislation is first half of 2023. This could be one or two years away. This is not ideal. As well, so that the LSH outbreaks with so many residents passed away. This has been a ticking time bomb for decades. With so many children being abused and so many elderly infected and dead. The E D and the SWD must be held accountable. So far, there's no public apology and inform account. I find it unacceptable. Well, that's not what I want to talk about today. I want to talk about this hostel for the severely mentally handicapped, especially that the residents. I received a lot of parents complaints. They were crying their eyes out. They found they couldn't live anymore and they are still going suicidal. I know that during the pandemic, a lot of the LCHDs like the LSHs reported outbreaks. The parents of the residents. This, this one case, the son was infected and he was adult and admitted to the hospital. And he was tied up to a bed for a whole month when he returned to the residential home. That his hands were showing scars. And parental visits are not allowed. And they could not take their medications from the hostel. The parents are very worried while the LSHD doing poor jobs and yet they could not take their children home. And not the parent after taking their son home. And, and parent was injured and yet he need to push his son around on the wheelchair for medical pumps, et cetera. This put a lot of pressure on the, on herself and she is on breaking point. The bureau claims that you were at 1.9 billion dollars for the community and the community care services to support the elderly, the children and the disabled. Can a government tell us how do you spend 1.9 billion? And how do you spend the original budget? That can concretely help the children and the disabled should and elderly and also the carers. How do you protect the parents? That they can live comfortably and take care of the family members. I understand it, or would you use into the pandemic, not only the residential home services, especially the fifth wave? And some of the committee support services was restricted by the pandemic. Even though we're trying to tap into technology to retain our support. Well, compared to normal circumstances, there's still a difference. Well, compared to normal circumstances, there's still a difference. It's what it means restrictions, we try to offer. As much assistance, I know this is difficult. I hope that we can work together as chairman. We're not noticing you are offering help if the social workers can help these parents. Man lost his feet, can you? Hear Miss Quat? Even though she was muted, I believe. Well. For the regular services. On the prerequisite of continuing epidemic, we try to offer as much support. However, we can't offer as much service as if there were no pandemic. Well. We all know about this service shot, well, is something we need to overcome. That's why for planning and land zoning and try to lobby for more resources for welfare purposes. I hope to get the electrical member support. But at one point nine billion, I can't be too detailed, has been scattered across different portfolios, a lot of which. Are used on the regularizing various pilot schemes. There are quite a number of them, it's hard for me to. Explain successfully how the one point nine billion will be spent. And for head one or three oh, under S W D. The energy rehab services and for year twenty two twenty three, to the surface breakdown and the. An increase in capacity. Next, Mrs. Chow Su Chong. Thank you, Chairman, good afternoon, Secretary, I look to follow my own question. L W W oh one four. I asked this question because I want to know for the integrated employment assistant program for self realized. I want to. Know the effectiveness of the commissioned agencies. And for the able bodied C S S A recipients, how do we help them to return to the job market? And to cut them off from C S S A reliance. I am deeply dissatisfied with the S W D response, I heard from quite a few members today. Who see that S G B G gave a very insincere answer. I asked for the five year period of the breakdown by age and gender. And for the activities organized it. The number of participations and attendance rate, these data is not available. If you do not keep track of these statistics, how do you monitor their service quality? Is the S W D serious in answering our questions? You claim there's not enough time. Right now, we can only allow ten questions each compares to more than a hundred for each member, that's a huge improvement already. How do you monitor? The agency's service performance? I'd like to thank the electrical understanding. Especially for over the past month or so. And the government is mobilizing and everyone to do the anti epidemic work with the help of the electrical president. Or we don't need to redeploy our staff to the as headquarters to take up information and answering their questions. For which I would like to thank electrical and the members. Well, and try to reply all the question within limited time. What can only work on the compiled and existing data, we do have some primary data. For example, with different subsidy scheme on the level of allowance and under the funding of service agreement. The the agents are required to provide information to S W D every quarter. This data will be used for S W D for quality compliance purposes. And we will not consolidate the data to do it over analysis. Unless you are conducting a service review, then the relevant statistical data, especially on the data by individual units, then we will do some consolidation. But the data we're showing to you. Either they are frequently requested by the electrical. And and we can able to consolidate and provide them to you or. We have an unless the relevant data in past reviews. And we managed to pull them out within a short time.
But we will not collect some information such as personal information. Unless the service is directly related to the service provided to the service recipient. Otherwise, we will not collect such information, we will not compile such a data, I hope members can understand, Mrs. Regina Yu.
Thank you, Chairman. Many members have pointed out that in this fifth wave of epidemic, our C H Es and. Our C H D has been hot hit, the medium age of those who die is eighty six, fifty five percent of the. Death cases live in a home. And of course, because of lack of manpower, cross infection has been serious. Well, Secretary, you know, for many years, let's call. Has been complaining about this. And the the you members have been saying this for years, there are many people die while waiting for place. You only spend one fourteen billion for both residential and daycare, well, isn't this too little? And we're talking about both residential and daycare service, fourteen billion, how can we get more resources? And have you also covered the two dollar? Well, the lowering of the age eligibility for the two dollar. Transport fare subsidy, have you covered this in fourteen billion dollars? The fourteen billion dollars expenditure will of course include the. The subsidy on the two dollar fare scheme. We have two bottlenecks here in terms of resources, and that is first of all hardware, secondly manpower shortage. In the past couple of years, particularly. In respect of community service, we have been seeing rather. Good improvements or increases, big increases. But even if I increase the funding. For say by twenty percent, we're not getting more anymore because of the shortage of manpower. Although we have seen marked improvement, you may say that we are just making up for past shortages. But but on the other hand, we are not able to keep pace with the increase in demand. For elderly services, you know that hardware takes time to complete in the past. Few years, we have new projects which. Were. Which commands in the last term or even the term before last term government and some and there was one. Which started in twenty odd years ago and it was only now commissioned within this term of government. So whenever we plan or you're not going to see the. Facilities commissioned within this current term of government, so. And if we are to. Introduce such projects, well, we are going to bear mind the increase in recurrent expenditure. Secretary, I know that you have you're facing some constraints, land is limited, you cannot have the all the manpower you need. What about land? Why don't you talk to the. Learns Department, one point eight hectares in Sandy Ridge where we. We were to build a column barium and now it's not going to happen. Yes, we are going to implement this proposal to use. The piece of land, but we have to talk to the not just the E P environmental bureau but also to the. Development Bureau. Any land that can be used for residential services and facilities will will certainly try to get get it. But sometimes the location may not be suitable for residential services. We would do our best to get the resources we need, the planning has been done, it's under the Hong Kong planning standard, a guideline. In the future, for P L H public rental housing projects, we will reserve some space for the facilities. The speaking order is like this, initially, I wing. This team, Michael Teen and other members. This session would end at four fifty, so we still have some. Time for other members who would like to join us. Mister Lee Si Wing, my question is reply number thirty five and thirty nine, twenty five. Is about social security payment. Elderly people have to satisfy the sixty day absence period. Restriction and many people have not been able to return to Hong Kong because of the epidemic. So can this rule be relaxed, the rule on absence from Hong Kong? And for the elderly people stranded in the mainland. Would 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 you give the grantee? Payment to them. Because of the epidemic. And so the voucher scheme. For one hundred, one thousand and four hundred people have joined and left the scheme. The voucher scheme, I mean. And it means that thirty eight percent of those who join have left the scheme now, the total number being for three thousand something. The voucher for residential services should should be a scheme. In that would follow the service recipient. Whatever they choose. And not many homes have participated in this voucher scheme, can this game be optimized in any way? We noticed that with the. Epidemic, many elderly recipients of social security allowances have been stranded in the mainland. So we have been very flexible in this in. Enforcing this rule of absence from Hong Kong in the twenty twenty one policy address. This was announced, a review will be conducted on this absence rule. You know that the Greater Bay Area is developing fast and many elderly people might be staying in the Greater Bay Area. More 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 than the past, so the review will be conducted within this year, as for. Care homes, the voucher scheme for care services. This will be regularized in due course, we started this in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen and the number of voucher. Was set at three thousand beds, but so far some two thousand, not three thousand have been issued. Fourteen fourteen hundred of them have tried and have now left. But there was those of them, those applicants have passed away, some have returned to their homes, but that's a minority. But we don't have many, we've we've just got a few homes participating in this game, can we get more? Well, we'll look at the service quality. Will certainly try to get as many homes as possible, which comply with our requirements to join the scheme. We'd like to get more, certainly. One example is. Is that? Will provide. A hundred percent. Subsidy for those who offer higher quality. We would monitor this development. We believe that this voucher scheme would be more more prominent in in the importance. Depending on the availability of. Homes and our financial positions, the voucher scheme would certainly facilitate the. Development of the residential care homes. Oh, four four, my question, oh, four four, oh, four five, it's about unemployment. We know that there are more and more C S S A recipients who are unemployed and that the T U R, the country unemployed. Relief have. Received many, you have received many applications for that, for the relief, for the T U R. So we need to help people to get. Jobs, but it seems that the government has been very passive in offering assistance. Many social organizations. Are doing this. They have been providing innovative service such as outreach service. On-site services and home delivery services. Can you provide a short term subsidy to encourage employers to hire more people? In such as that those are talked about the Ministry of Human Resources and Social Security. And the waiting time for rehab service. Has become longer, this goes against the promise made by the C E that there should be no zero waiting time. Can you do things to make sure that the objective is achieved next year? And we have problems with the manpower in care homes and. You have been relying on importation of labor for many years. And refine, talk about the. Navigations. Scheme for young persons in care services, but the waste age rate for the young participants is very high, thirty five percent. And the S W D. Has not been able to answer questions such as the salary, income, the working hours of these carers. This goes to show that the government is not sincere in solving the problems, to get to the root of the problems, we should encourage. Local employment, employment of local people, we should look at the wage level. The use of technology. Would you follow the example of the construction industry so that we have a dedicated body for training? So that we can attract more the young people.
As for how do we help the unemployed to secure a job? I suppose we can say for the next session on labor. On various. As which subsidy offered by employers. But the preschool rehabilitation services. Well, with O P R S. And for year twenty and twenty one. The waiting time stretched slightly longer from four point eight months increased to from five point two months. You promise a zero waiting time. This has to do with the epidemic. An issue we add one thousand new places annually, and there will be another one thousand new places. And for the O P R S. I suppose it's pretty close to zero waiting time for the onsite preschool rehab services from apply. To arrival, there's three to three months of time lag. But if I want two months, the actual waiting time. Maybe just two to three months. I believe that upcoming financial year, the O P R S will achieve close to zero waiting time. And for the early education and training center by our estimate by twenty four, twenty five. The. Will be achieved zero wait time by then, for the special childcare centers. The demand, the supply connection with the demand. On the existing program, we deployed our resources. For example, by twenty twenty five, twenty six, there'll be. At the early education training center may be diverted to the S C C Cs. So that we can shorten the waiting time for the S C C Cs. So that's about a waiting time. I'd like to thank the members highlighting the dropout rate of the, about the navigation scheme for the care sector. But that was the dropout rate for twenty fifteen and after enhancement. We haven't fully launched the enhanced program. Well, the dropout rate. Has dropped by ten percent compared to twenty fifteen. And members aware that especially when start at the first or second job. They tend to be highly mobile. About a twenty to thirty percent of dropout rate is quite normal for the age group. Even though we try to enhance the appeal of this scheme and hopefully we can retain them in the care sector. That for the. Elderly colleges, on what the care sector, we will set up a dedicated college. We already identify a site that will be in Kun Chong. When sharing the same site with the civil service college. And we'll work with other training and other professionals, and this is all indoor works. However, this is not reflected in the upcoming appropriation bill, next Miss Doring Kong.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to ask the secretary on W W O five seven. On the disabled and mentally handicapped. It's severely and mildly intellectually, this mentally handicapped, the average waiting time is about ten years. And during the waiting time, a lot of the mentally. Handicapped with the P W rely on their family members as carers. And these cares are mostly women. And they do have little knowledge or assistance provided to them in a lot of developed economies. They take a shift carriers seriously and provide allows assistance accordingly. For example, the cares of the P W Ds and the mentally handicapped. Or what assistance and policy did L W have in place to help this carers? On N X three, the average waiting time for various residential rehab services is quite severe. Well, this is a planning problem, especially for this severely handicapped or moderately handicapped hostels. If we don't start. Including that in the zoning exercise, they would not be built from past experience. When we tried to identify sites for this hostel to emit what fears. A local races and the district councillor opposition, therefore all these developments. Should start from the initial zoning exercise for completion will take about one a decade. In my response to another member, the twenty eighteen. It's two thousand eight, all the planning ratio was removed. And just a few months ago managed to incorporating the rehab services. Planning ratios, however, it will take time to make up for the lost time. Well, the cares rely more on the community care services, there are two types. First, home services, which include a training to help the carers. And second, the central base services. For example, daycare centers for the carers. While the waiting time is not short for them either. We tried to identify more simple locations to set up the centers, thank you. And if I love Miss Kong, none for me, thank you. Thanks, Mister Michael Tien. Thank you, Chairman, my question is about L W W O two two. When the table. Hundred sixty five agencies, about two hundred billion of funding. Well, their aim was meant to help people, including the B W Ds and special education needs children and the grassroots. I was wondering. Any agencies to not get enough oversight, we spending so much to hopefully to help those in need. And some of them, we might be subventing them to conduct abuse. You have a hundred sixty five agencies. In different service specialties. Do you have any kind of oversight mechanism to ensure that you twenty billion? Even if you can't help the users, you shouldn't harm those you're trying to help. Should we use the C C T Vs or decoy operations? Or should we just conduct a regulars announce visits? Or should we just take their word for it? And if there are no complaints, that everything is okay. And only use complaint as the only indicators. Forty twenty billion for a hundred sixty five agencies. So what is the ma, the oversight? The philosophy on their oversight in my response to other members. End of early May, we'll have a meeting at the welfare service panel. To explain the oversight mechanism, since Mr. Ten has brought it up, I can only. Elaborate briefly for any subvention project, there's always this of funding and service agreement. Which including provisions on the service to be provided, service quantity and service quality. And. There's also the service standards that you must observe. And sometime we conduct a surprise visits. Or for the C C T Vs. Well, not all services can be provided, but with C C T V, some of them just inappropriate. On the child protection. We're conducting a review. And in a short time. The S W G will start a working group to commence this work and. We ask, make sure to make a briefing to the welfare service panel. Would ensure that the protected children are free from abuse. It's definitely one of our key tasks, Secretary, under existing mechanism. Let's say the P W Ds, for example, it will, you must know if you receive any complaints, since you won't install C C T Vs. Would you conduct a stakeholder surveys? As anonymous respondents on the service, have you been doing this? Well, some of the services required the service units. To conduct a user survey, why can't they get them to this instead of rely on the service units? The government can take the lead. Well. Generally, we need to conduct a service review. We will collect certain data and contact your service users directly. Well, we have with three thousand funding service agreements, they're the same number of service units. If you think. That. Need to conduct a survey investigation every unit, well, we can discuss that, however, the manpower and the resource involved. And we ought to need to allocate extra funding to receive and assist the S W D inspector staff. This cost resources, if you think this important. In the future, I would like to, like to have the member support for the S W D. To beef up is supervisory manpower. I see we need to strike a balance. For every a new headcount and S W D for supervision. That the agency to deploy more than one person to finish the information to this S W D staff. For the extra resources, we should take a risk based approach. To be more cost efficient, welcome comments on this. Thanks, Mister Bill Chang. Have you ready, let's move on to Mister Houdan Chow.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on my own question. W B W O one six, let me state a point. That since the outbreak of the fifth wave and different occasions, maybe the section may have hurt for me. Many times and caring for the elderly, the those in the R C H Es. Well, that we need to be adequately staffed. The spirit has recruited more than one thousand mainland care workers. To take care the elderly and the holding centers and so on, we see it as necessary. This manpower, when the sixth wave comes. This manpower should stay at a holding center to take care of elderly. I hope to put this on record, hope the L W B can hear this. I hope that after some time, you just disbanded. This batch of workers, when the sixth wave comes, we need them on standby. As for the interim. Of the sec, the Bush should come up with some solutions for them for the replies here number oh one six. Dusty. A bird had a food grabs on the staffing situation on different. O C H Es, the brew has replied, you provide over thirty thousand residential places. Well, on the distribution of the caring staff by each nursing home. Well, it's not provided in my reply and claimed that it does not kept such figures. If when you can't answer me today. I wonder in future, we can have a systematic collection. Of. The. Staffed in each residential home. Only have you grabbed this number that you're able to offer a tailored solution. We've said many times today that the R C H E are so understated, it is nothing new. Well, you want to tackle the problem head on. Would you consider the manning ratios? Once we have the full set of data, they can definitely help to take it forward. So I wonder if, well, if we can answer today. I wonder, you consider systematic collection of the data. To help to boost the manpower and the manner ratio to address the chronic under shortage at R C H Es. Thank you.
Secretary, thank you for showing concern. We have the comprehensive figures, but we don't have the statistic on each and every individual home. Of course, we can provide some. Collation, collator figures, for example, past surveys of. Care homes in terms of manpower, we can provide you with the information later. It's that, if you said that twenty percent of the. Positions are not filled. But because of the epidemic. Well, we have to wait until the epidemic is under control. We may need to keep some of the facilities after the current wave is over. And that will include some of the manpower. So I hope when you scrutinize the manpower, you understand that we need to have some bridging arrangement. In terms of manpower and facilities, so that when we have another outbreak, we would have all the resources readily available. Because we. Cannot really cope if the outbreak is severe, for example, the number of cases. Is double every four days, and we will not be able to. Get all the bags and all the workers. There's no way we can double our baths or workers doubled every four days, that's just not possible. So we have learned a lesson. So when the fifth way of the epidemic eases off, and we achieve the target of zero infection. We may have to keep some of the facilities that we have already provided, for example, holding. Centers are now located in some sports. Indoor games hall, we will have to return the premises. To the original user, for example, some facilities are now located in the cruise terminal. But these will be. Return to the original user. So we have to consider how we can mobilize our resources that we need. If there's a six way and we have the cabin style. Isolations and facilities, I believe the government will make comprehensive plans about all these facilities. Miss Quang Ling Li, my question is oh two nine. Is the question raised by Mister Leomun Wong. It's about Hong Kong people or elderly people living in the mainland. According to the bureau, for those under Guangdong scheme and Fujian scheme, we have some twenty five thousand beneficiaries. This time, the problems with. Shortage of R C H E places has been. Exposed very to us very obviously. Do you have a longer term plan? You know that the Greater Bay Area. Program has been announced for three years already, have you talked to our Guangdong office? Program has been announced for three years already. Have you talked to our Guangdong office? And have we been trying to understand better the twenty two thousand odd elderly. People in living in the mainland and can we do more to allow people to relocate to the mainland to ease. The pressure face our local facilities. In the twenty twenty one policy address, it was announced that you are going to relax this absence limit for the different social security assistance scheme. And also the pre application one year continuous resident requirement. What is the the object, the the goals that you would like to achieve under this particular project? We know in the. Uh the future development of the the Greater Bay Area is very important part of Hong Kong's development. So whether we're talking about elderly services. Or so uh social security assistance. For our people, we need to look into all these. It's been announced in twenty twenty one policy address. When we take implemented the Guangdong and Fujian scheme. But we already pu- allow these people to apply for the social security assistance. Without the need to be in Hong, we'll be residing in Hong Kong for one year. First, for example, they can apply for O A or O A L A. So can this arrangement be repeated? So. We've only got some rough figures about Hong Kong elderly people living in the mainland. We know that for those over eighty sixty five, we have some eighty thousand over the age of sixty five living in the Greater Bay Area. And they are so called young elderly people. So the the demand for elderly services may rise as we move along, as we go forward. We need to make some arrangements to tie in with the elderly services on both sides. And some of the organ- welfare service organizations are providing the service both in Hong Kong and in the mainland. We'll have to find ways to make sure that the availability will be. Arrange in such a way that they can get the same service in the mainland. Well, yes, it's important that we provide for elderly services for these Hong Kong people in the mainland. Miss Qua. Ling Li. Thank you, Chairman. I want to pull up a previous question. I've been listening to members' questions. It seems that the bureau doesn't have. All the many data that we want to get. Well, we we do this to monitor your work. If the data are not available, then it's there's very little we can do. Because there will be no way for us to to judge what's been done by your bureau. As we would like to know the the number of people waiting for our C H D. And also the administrative costs involved in these schemes. Please furnish the information after the meeting so that we can. See for ourselves how things are going and how we should do to plan for future service. And questions have been asked about. Elderly services provided to the to elderly Hong Kong residents living in the. In the Greater Bay Area. I hope that you consider doing the same for the disabled. Thank you. Chairman, maybe I can provide some supplementary information to Miss Quo. On community rehab rehabilitation service. We don't have a. Centralized register for waiting list applicants. So the waiting list is kept by individual service organizations. But we do have a central register for those waiting for, for example, the preschool rehab services. For the front night service providers. If they are to keep the statistics in the long term, so that when questions are asked by members. The data will be readily available. That mean that they the information will be furnished by the service providers to my bureau. From time to time or regularly, and we need to do some correlation and analysis before we can respond to your questions. So in terms of administrative course. Uh well, a person, they are spending some five to ten percent. In for administrative costs. Oh, which is defined in. In different ways for different organizations, so we can certainly try to. Find the information you need. And sometimes you, we we are going to take out the administrative. Work carried out by the central organization to individual service agencies. Uh because we provide a lump sum grant to the. Or organization as a whole and not to service units. But I'm glad that you understand that there's a need for data to be collater and provider so that we can monitor. The provision of service. I would like to know the the administrative cost and how much is taken up by administrative cost in the. Service organizations. We'll look into this. But members. Uh I understand. Why. Members would like to get more information. To monitor the situation, but because of the epidemic, we're not seeing each other as much as previously. Well, in the future, we will try to. Uh have talks with you. So that you can understand how things are done in the service provision. And that that would be better than asking for information which. Can only come a week or so after you have raised your questions. Miss Elizabeth Quo. I want to follow up on the questions on our C H Ts and carers. Like our C H Es, our C H Ts are facing manpower shortage, acute manpower shortage. Yeah, for a long, long time. So either you increase the pay to attract local people to work as care workers. Or alternatively. You can plan for labor importation from the mainland to resolve the shortage. You must choose one or the other. You cannot just sit. On the fence and do nothing to resolve the problem for ten, more than ten years. And even if we increase the pay to a. Great extent and still maybe local people wouldn't be willing to do it the job. And you do not really have the. Necessary number of workers to take care of the. Residents already, and it makes the hard even harder, the work even harder. And the work it. It has become harder and therefore fewer people are willing to. Work in the homes. You cannot rely on. Temporary workers. And for our relief workers, because that would mean that the problem would linger on. Oh, I don't know whether they will go, there's going to be a six wave of epidemic, are the homes and. Are you prepared? We need to tell them how to use the P P E's. But what about the layout, the ventilation of the homes? Where I don't think they are prepared. Well, and come June, are we going to same this, are we going to face the same problems? I I I must ask you to get prepared now. And many parents. Feel helpless. Although your your staff are working from home, they can still make calls to the parents. But it seems that the social workers are not accessible. And I I've talked about one parent whose child was infected and was hospitalized. At first he was verified and then the hospital. Call her whether they would give up resuscitation. And the the parent was feeling hopeless. Uh she tried to have a remote video call and the. But the son was. Found to be quite okay apart from some cough coughing problems and now as so she. Uh refused to give up and now the son has been discharged. It seems that many service providers are not. Offering timely help and they are given up. So these carriers are having a very tough time.
Secretary, I heard the questions from Miss Quat. As well, how do we maintain services during the pandemic? Well, we look at the remote support. Let's say. That's about guarantee technology and general I D applications. I admit there were shortcomings. I hope that we can harness G I T and the guarantee technology to keep providing these services. But not just the social workers. A lot of the parents, but official therapists or occupational therapists. However. Even before the allied, even before the pandemic, there is a severe shortage, usually there's a twenty to twenty five percent shortfall. With his positions at the peak of the pandemic, some of the allied health or twenty or thirty percent. I came down with COVID or twenty hundred percent under quarantine, thus the service quantity. Well, it simply aggravated the shortage. This is far from ideal. Then. That whether we can make better use of technology to help the needy service users. This is something we would try hard to achieve. Next, Mister Steven Ho.
Mister Steven Ho. Pardon me, I was testing the microphone. Any other members wish to speak? If not. We shall resume the meeting at five. Therefore, we shall restart at five is scheduled. Please attend on time.